All right, it being June 11th at 6:00 PM, I'll convene the Westboro Select Board. Welcome to all those in the audience, and all are welcome to join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'll open up at this time for open forum if there's anyone here would like to speak. Seeing none, we'll move on to item two of our agenda, the site plan overview for 80 Turnpike Road. So presenters here? Welcome, come on up.
Thank you.
Just introduce yourself.
I am Marshall Gould, an attorney representing Aubrecht Auto Group. They are acquiring the property at 80 Turnpike Road, next to two properties that they already have on each side of Long Meadow Road. And with me tonight, we have the general manager, Anthony Carboni, who spends his time in Westboro with the two sites and the new site to come. And we also have Barry Atchison from WDA Engineering Group. And I know that this is a site plan overview, but we wanted to have people here to answer any questions that you might have. And just for your information, we are going to the planning board next Tuesday for full site plan review, and hopefully, if we're successful there, we hope to come back here as soon as possible thereafter. So with that, do you want to, would the board like to hear more about Aubrecht before, or just the site?
Sure, this is a good opportunity if you'd like to get a little free advertising, so to speak, and then also certainly talk about what your plans are here.
Sure, so the Aubrecht Auto Group is a family-owned and operated organization. George Aubrecht Senior and Junior are the principals of the group. We have seven dealerships now, Wilbur Toyota being the largest among them, also two Nissan stores, one in Milford, one in Marlborough, two Infiniti stores, one in Milford, I'm sorry, one in Nashua, one in Norwood, GMC in Wakefield, and now Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram in Westboro. I've been operating the store since we acquired it, and in fairness, looking to bring it back to actually Dan Tortora's model of service. I'm a big fan of Dan's Jeep growing up, and Dan's a great guy that I talk to all the time, and I just want to bring that level of service back to the area.
Terrific. Well, welcome, I'm just curious, is there any comments you'd like to make about the building and your plans for the building?
Yeah, so the plans are, the plans for 80 Turnpike are designed to have as minimal impact as possible, there'll be no customer traffic intended to go toward the building. All of the intake for all service vehicles will be maintained, being down at 84 Turnpike Road, which is where all service customers enter the building. In the interest of customer experience, all intake is at the Jeep store, that's where our largest waiting room is, the nicest entrance facility as well. That building is dedicated to express service, oil change, filters, et cetera. The 82 building, which is, we refer to as the Chrysler Building, is the original Dan's Jeep. That building is reserved for our flat rate technicians. The majority of that work will then be moved to 80 Turnpike Road, which is a much, a facility just much better fit for the application.
Terrific. I'll open up to the board, see if there's any questions, comments, or suggestions they'd like to pass along to the planning board.
Go ahead.
I'm good for now.
Thank you. That's a good one. I know this is the site plan overview for 80, but we just mentioned with 82 of moving that over, is there then a planned use for the existing space at 82, or is that outside of?
It's largely outside the scope, but that being said, I'm happy to expound upon it. The 82 will still be used as a mechanic shop, just with fewer bays. Right now, that's where our reconditioning department is, and right now, they have the use of one bay, and it's just, it's sort of unsustainable to do that. So we're going to give him a few more bays, and we want to be able to utilize the space for a little more of the, as trucks get, you know, bigger and bigger as they've, they've sort of gotten, the larger trucks, Amazon vans, et cetera, cannot go onto a normal 10,000 or 12,000 pound lift, they have to go on a 15,000 to 20,000 pound lift, and those are significantly larger. The footprint of them just doesn't allow for it. So for us to basically maintain that level of service for that customer, we need to have more of those larger lifts, and that building at 82, the Chrysler Building, is better suited for it. So currently, as it stands in that building, if there's 10 lifts, that number will go down to five. The majority of the rest of them will go into the 80 building. So we have 16 lifts now, we'll net 22 at the end of it. So that's why I said it's relatively minimal impact, because any kind of coming and going traffic will be done out of the 84 Turnpike Road, that's where customers will pick up their vehicles, that's where all customer interaction will take place. It'll just be a service facility.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
So I think you've answered the question, you're expanding the service capacity.
Yes.
So the parking at 80 would be utilized for vehicles waiting for service or waiting to be picked up?
Correct. And employees.
And employees.
Yes.
And so then you have, you have enough space, you really don't need more customer parking?
I don't, there's more than adequate space, there's no intention of having any customer parking. So our license breaks out employee and customer parking. Customer parking is really twofold, it's vehicles waiting for service and then active customers who are transient. There'll be no transient customer parking at 80 Turnpike, there'll be cars waiting for parts, et cetera, that are just, you know, waiting for the parts to arrive there. Anything that's transient will stay at 80 Turnpike Road or 82.
If I, if I could, I just want to point out that at 80, I'm sure all of you are familiar with the property, it fronts right on Turnpike Road, so there are, right now, how many parking spaces are going to be right at Turnpike Road?
There's currently 15 along in here.
And those are the regular nine by 20 spaces for inventory, they can be smaller, so they may squeeze in another space or two by making them smaller, and that will be new car inventory, just as displayed for people driving by. And then, now that they will own both 80 and 82, there's been kind of a rental agreement between the owner of 80 and the occupant of 82, that they would share some of the parking, so they will continue to do that at the easterly side of building 82. And then, there are extras, so what we currently have is on the license, Barry, do you want to just give the new counts for, there are 63 spaces at this building, and I'll shortcut it, and then there might be questions. There are going to be somewhere between 16 or 17 when they open, it's going to be size that they could potentially have 20 employees in that building, the service will be done downstairs, upstairs will be offices and conference rooms. So they will have room for the employees there, and they will have some new car inventory, and there will be extra spaces for customers' vehicles, not that the customers are expected to drive up, but when the customers rock their cars up at 84 for service, people from within the business will valet the cars over to the service area, and when done, they will valet them back to 84, is that accurate?
Correct, 100%.
So that might be a good enough summary, otherwise, we could put up the other plan showing all the spaces, but I think you can see the building, it's the second building to the right of Long Meadow Road, and the other two buildings are just immediately west of that, that they are currently utilizing.
Sure.
Just a, more a question of curiosity, so if I understand from the plan, part, the back half of like the roof portion is going to be taken off and then built up for your bays, did I?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no, there'll be no changes to the facade other than two external bays.
Okay.
Roof line remains exactly the same, it will not go up.
Got it.
The building was previously a two-story office building.
Yes.
And the prior owners to us demoed the majority of the second floor.
Oh, that's what, okay.
So the building already has 25-foot ceilings, which is
Which is what you mean for those.
Far more than sufficient for us.
You can see in the, in the dash line here is where they've removed
Okay, that's, I was
The space with inside, so the outside of the building will stay the same as it is today. What they do propose is for access and egress is a new overhead door here, and an exit door here. There'll be another, I'm going to call it a
Mandore.
Just a mandore.
Yep.
More for managers, as well as another door for access for the fire department.
Sure.
Because they need, now that they're changing the use, there will be sprinklers in there, which it didn't have before, so just access to all that
Yep.
Will be out of there, and with that, this is primarily the only changes to the exterior that
Okay, thank you. And then, the second floor Aubrecht will use, or do you anticipate bringing like a tenant in there for lease space?
There'll be no tenant in there, so the, the second floor is, so on the most southern corner of the top floor, right side.
Yep.
That'll be part storage, long-term part storage. Center will have an office, quite frankly, for me, and some office for, some accounting, future accounting, if necessary, there'll be a part storage room, and then the northern part of the building is reserved for conference room and employee break space.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Terrific, it looks like there's some good common sense updates to the building, just looking at some of the notes, the tags on the drawings there, so glad to see a reuse of the building, makes a lot of sense being right next to where you're at today, so glad to see
Appreciate it.
The expansion and growth.
Thank you. Yeah, the signage won't be impacted, we're not asking for any additional signage that already exists, because again, it's not intended to be customer-facing. So it's, if anything, it's just updating what already exists in the building and adding to exterior bay doors.
Terrific.
Fundamentally.
Well, if there are no other questions, I'll thank you for your time and wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Oh, did we have any comments for the planning board? No? I don't think we did. All right, it's pretty simple.
Made it easy for Seale.
Thank you.
She's shocked, actually, she's like, uh, seeing a picture.
All right, on to item three, request for alteration of premise at Harry's Restaurant at 149 Turnpike Road.
And then it's you.
And you too.
I'll stick around if there's any questions.
Yeah, so just introduce yourself, and you're welcome to kind of share with us what's going on with Harry's.
So I'm Janine Sander.
And I'm Sue Ryan.
If you don't mind, if you can just speak in the microphone.
We're just looking to
People like to hear you on TV.
Expand the patio, basically, just make it so, we're not going to serve out there, it's mostly for takeout, so to the side of the building, we're just looking to pick up picnic tables and have people be able to go out there and eat, if that's what they want to do, outside.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead, Alan.
So you currently have an area, you know, starting with COVID, with outside dining, is it the same size, or are you repositioning it a little?
Exactly the same.
So this is just making that?
We're just going to put up jersey barriers and planters to make it safe, and then allow wheelchairs to be brought in.
Okay, and so it's just making this permanent?
Correct.
Okay.
Just a clarification question, I read, I believe initially it was six, I just wasn't sure how I was reading.
Six, it's six picnic tables right now that have six people at them, yes.
That's, thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions?
Yeah, just, it's an alteration of license, but are you serving, have you been serving alcohol out there presently?
Yes, prior.
Prior.
Prior, we have.
Now because of change of rules.
Now we're not doing anything out there.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
And so there's not going to be any service going out there, it's people coming inside, purchasing their product?
At this point.
Going on, just saying.
For this summer, yes.
And did I see correctly, you said jersey barrier, did I see correctly that the revision of the second version is actually water-filled?
Correct.
Barriers, not, not jersey barriers?
Correct.
Okay. Will, will people be able to take alcohol from the inside out there to sit as well?
So if they order inside and eat as a takeout, we would bring it out to them with their food.
Okay.
Out to the patio.
Will there be any additional signage to show that this area is the only, the dedicated area that can bring alcohol outside of there?
Absolutely, absolutely.
No, I just want to say thank you for coming before us to go through this process, much appreciated.
Thank you.
We'll welcome the additional opportunity, business opportunity for you in town. Did you have another follow-up?
I did, just on the, on service, so just, I think this is more a question for you, Christie, so would this license allow them just to start serving, they don't have to come back before the board if they change kind of their practice, like, so they're actually serving outside, taking orders outside?
Right, right, so this allows them to serve outside.
Okay, great, good.
Thank you.
Congratulations on the expansion, and I, that'll be good.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the request for an amendment to the Section 12 Wine-Malt with Cordial's Liquor License for Harry's Restaurant at 149 Turnpike Road, for an alteration of premises for an outdoor patio.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five zero.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Best of luck.
You did it, good job.
Right, as soon as you sign this, and I send it to you.
Okay, not quite, not, not quite tonight.
All right, moving on to item number four, consideration of requests to celebrate Pride Month, including request to amend the flag policy. Let me just bring that up here.
Do you want me to?
Do we have? Sorry? Hi, are you Julie McCoy?
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Do you want me to introduce the topic first?
Please.
Okay. So, so this is, this is sort of two pieces, the board did receive a request from a resident who's here, just asking that the board consider revising your flag policy, that's something that you've all gone through very recently, looking at the flag policy, currently it's very limited to the, the American flag, the flag of the Commonwealth, police and fire department flags, and the POW flag as well. Also, part of this agenda item is, last year, the board did create a proclamation in celebration of Pride Month, and that was brought to you from select board member Marshall, who is also requesting something similar this evening.
Thank you, Christie. If you'd like to introduce yourself and tell us what your thoughts are.
If you can bring the microphone over.
Hi, my name is Julie McCoy, do I need to say my address?
Sure, yes, please.
32 Hyder Street. So I am recommending that the flag policy in the town of Westboro be modified to include the Progress Pride flag being flown on the town flagpole during Pride Month, which is the month of June. While I understand the current town of Westboro flag policy is a result of the Supreme Court case of 2022, many other towns and cities in Massachusetts have revisited their flag policy since 2022 to include the Progress Pride flag for Pride Month. After doing some research, I have found that currently there are at least 57 towns and cities in Massachusetts that have amended their flag policy to include the Progress Pride flag to be flown. If at least 57 towns can amend their flag policy, there is a way that Westboro can too. Many people seem to be concerned that this is, this will open up a can of worms allowing any flag to be displayed, but that is just not true. The town retains full control of what is displayed on town property. For example, recently, the town of Franklin added the Pride flag to their flag policy. Their flag policy also reads that no other flag shall be allowed to be flown on the above described town-owned flagpoles. Flags to be flown on those flagpoles pursuant of this policy reflect the official Town of Franklin policy position and are not intended to create a forum for private expression. The importance of having the Progress Pride flag flown during the month of June shows our residents, specifically the LGBTQIA+ community, that Westboro is a safe and inclusive place to live, and that Westboro is supportive and accepting of this community. The Pride flag is not associated with any specific organization, political party, or religion, it's simply a symbol of inclusion. It's about time that Pride Month is acknowledged and celebrated in Westboro. Having the flag flown would be an important symbol of inclusion and diversity in Westboro starting in 2024.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the board?
So, yeah, so first of all, thank you for bringing this forward and for all the research, I learned a few things in your, what you provided, so thank you, and I did go, and, not that I didn't believe you, but verified a bit of that, just so, so I was doing my due diligence. I, I know our board has, in the past, as the policy indicates, we've, we've amended the policy, it feels like we're always talking about the flag policy, 20, or 1993, but then 2020 and 2021. I do recall both the last time that we amended it, and there was a lot of discussion and trepidation, as you indicated, about, based on prior court cases, so I would like to hear, you know, from the board, I will, I will tell you that before I read your comments and the 57 other communities, that number actually was pretty surprising to me, I was not aware of that. I was more in the camp of, let's just leave it be, and though I probably, I probably fly one at my home, let's just not go there, not because I don't want to recognize, for all the reasons you said, in terms of inclusion and safety and security and all of that and celebration, but more for the can of worms that it could expose, and yet, I hear on the other side of myself, so I'm like having these conversations with myself, right, which happens all the time, and that is, why should we not celebrate, it is not a political flag, you know, why should we not celebrate a portion of our, our community, or, you know, and beyond, in a way that is flying a flag? And, and doing that, to not fly it and to kind of worry about what could be, I'm not sure that that's a logical argument, so I'm interested in what the other board members have to say, and I'll reserve further comments until I hear from you guys.
Similar shopping, a question, because we've been through this a few times, and then trying to educate myself, and I think the chair educated me on kind of heritage months and whatever, and this is a federally recognized month, I guess the question I have is, it is, but then there are other months too, and right now, would we want to recognize any of these federally, so for example, February is African-American History Month, and if there's a flag that wants to be flown, it would flow that, because it's really about diversity and inclusion in that space, not just calling out this, so it's American History Month in February, one's History Month in March, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in May, LGBTQ, LGBTQ Pride Month in June, Hispanic Heritage Month September, Native American Heritage Month in, in November. I think if we're doing this, I'd want to go even more broadly, so I, I guess what I'm saying, supportive of it, but I do think just trying to educate myself on the whole thing too, and how do we not open a can of worms, but be inclusive
Yep.
With this, to me would be to include all of those federally recognized heritage months, and no one has to fight if they don't want to, but it allows for that to happen.
Yeah, I, well, I think that's an interesting thought. Yeah, I, well, I think that's an interesting thought. I guess we would either, because, I mean, this is still going up on a town flag pole, right? So if we're gonna, if, if we make that decision, I think we, we choose to fly, fly them all, right? If we're gonna recognize them all, we fly, which I would be fine with, I think, I guess, yeah. I think this is a little tricky to me. It sort of popped up on Friday for today. It can't, I mean, it really can't go past this meeting, right? We can't do this in two weeks, because, you know, then we're flying it for a weekend. So, so, I mean, I, I guess it is a good way, right? You throw it out there and it's like, hey, you can do it here, and here you go. So I, I agree, I want to be fully supportive. I, I think the, the proclamation is a slam dunk, right, to me. The, the flag itself then becomes, i- is it sort of a separate item, right? Because you're, you're right. I mean, I, I, this is a, this research is tremendous. First of all, thank you. I think there's a couple other topics we'd like to ask you to look in before us. Only half kidding. So, but yeah, I'm, I'm looking forward to the discussion here, because I, I do want to be fully supportive. But then, right, do, do we do this across the board?
Yeah.
For all, for all the months? Because, because I think we, we do proclamations for a lot of them. But, you know, would we be consistent in that manner? And so, but, you know, regardless, want to be supportive, right?
So.
Thank you, Sean.
I, I've had a number of interesting conversations with people as this has come, come up, right? And certainly it's a, it's a nationally recognized month. There are others. Someone said, well, what about Italian-American month, where they want to fly the Italian flag? I said, well, that's a flag of another country. And we wouldn't want to do that, right? And so I started looking and, and given the time, didn't have a lot of time to research. But I'm not sure how many designated months like this have such a strong, unique, symbolic flag that's universally recognized. And specifically, I know there are different instantiations of pride flags. This is specifically to the progressive pride flag, which is a specific that's been tied to this month as well. I will say the question came up to me, someone pointed out that if the town put its town seal on a piece of fabric, it could not fly it on a flag pole as a town flag, because we don't authorize.
Oh, you mean by policy?
By policy, we can't fly a Town of Westboro flag. When this policy was written, the DPW didn't have a logo. They, we talked about the DPW when we added the fire and police, and DPW didn't have a logo then, they have, and now they do have a wonderful logo now that could be on a flag. And the school department flag can't be flown on a town flag pole, only on school one, because of the policy. So I, I don't think we need, I don't think we need generic wording at this point for every celebratory month, simply because we don't have enough information that says those months have flags associated with the celebration that aren't associated with a specific political or religious or cultural organization that might lead the celebration. And for that reason, I'm comfortable amending the policy to include the progressive pride flag. But I would also like to see a Town of Westboro flag, a DPW flag, and a school flag as well added.
Can I ask, sorry, can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think you, you actually touched on this when you read the Town of Franklin policy and something that was part of the conversation previously, because that court case talks about the, the nuance between, or the difference between the government position versus the First Amendment. And so it, we were offered, and I think you have them, some potential opportunities to amend the, the policy that would allow you, but to, to potentially fly, fly other flags, but it's really the town's position. So I, I think when we talk about sort of this potential for all these other months or anything, it's, it can't be, it's not that someone comes to you and wants to fly their flag, it's that the town has a position. So I know that that's just a nuance, and certainly the same thing could happen where the town wants to issue proclamations for all of those months as well.
Can I, can I ask, Christie, just to clarify a question? So in, you had indicated that town council was looking at our policy. Have they offered an opinion, and maybe I missed it?
Yeah.
Oh, is it in front of me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got it today.
I'm sorry.
I think there's two of them, right?
There's two potential changes.
Okay.
Yeah, and then one.
Can we just have a quick second, or can I just look at that?
Yeah, while Shelby's doing that, I think, you know, my piece was that it would be a decision on our part to say, hey, it covers all federally recognized heritage months or something. I don't want to make that motion tonight, because I don't, to Alan's mind, I don't know enough there. But I guess personally, I, I'm fine with amending tonight, but I'd want to put it on our list to ask and ask our council to help us, broader discussion of wording it that is truly inclusive of all these. I mean, I think that's, our understanding of this is to, is to put it out there. And I think we, if we want to do this tonight, it may be that it's just amending in one way. I'm not one of ours that talks about flags of sports teams and that type of stuff. I'm not sure I want to go that far in that one. I like the more simple one.
That's way too controversial. We have Yankee fans in this town.
So I'll just quickly add my comments in, in here as well. First of all, thank you again for coming tonight. And I'll just share with the community that we did receive around a dozen different emails from various different community members, all in support of this changing the, the town policy. So it's great to see the input from the community and yourself. You know, my, my thought on this, similar to board, have had some reservations. You know, I, I get caught up, the town council provide us some language to better understand this. They talk about ceremonial flags may be included in the flag policy and having the pride flag as a month is a ceremony is, is basically the concept here that I, I think the other fifty-seven towns have, have taken that position on. I understand that, but I too, like Alan stated, and Ian also just reiterated, am not clear on what all the different potential this brings. I don't know, I'm, I'm imagining there's a list of probably a hundred different federally recognized months of, right? And are they all reflective of, of Westboro as a community? You know, I, I don't know. And I don't know if it's even fair to say that, because if one member of our community is associated with something, then they in fact could bring that as a ceremonial thing to the community and, and we couldn't deny them. What I would like to understand, and this goes further to your point, Ian, is about the, a little more understanding and research a, a, about taking such a broad stroke, is understanding what us as a board or as future boards would have as an opportunity if someone came out of the blue and asked for something that was ceremonial from their perspective, but may not necessarily be ceremonial from the state, from the perspective of the federal government or the state government. What would future boards be able to do if it was something that the board did not feel was appropriate? Except this, this change in, in the way we include in the policy doesn't provide a mechanism for people to come and ask to fly ceremonial flags. But we're, but we're in one draft. I, I guess my motion would be specifically to add the progressive pride flag, a DPW, Department of Public Works flag, a Town of Westboro flag, and Westboro Public School flags to the list under section three of our existing policy. And that would certainly get us, so I'm hearing a motion, is that your motion, or do you just say? It's the motion I would make as an example, in that what we're doing is we're making a statement that says all of these flags represent the position of the Town of Westboro government, as governmental speech. Yes, there are other ceremony, there are other ceremonial months out there. They may or may not have flags. There are other reasons people might want to fly flags to celebrate different things.
Yep.
But we are not saying anyone who has a ceremony or a clause, that's government speak. We're, we're saying specifically that these flags represent governments, the speech of the town of government and the position of the town of government, which would be inclusive of the progressive pride flag specifically. So that's, that's where I, again, where I get caught up. I understand where, where you're, where you're coming from, but our government is a representative of our community. Right. Right? So, so, so I, I look at the ceremonial, this term ceremonial, and I, and I get it. It's, it's the government saying this is something as a country, as a state, as a, as a community, we want to observe. We all know the term progressive is politically charged. And whether or not you believe that the pride flag is political in nature, there are people who do believe it is political in nature. So you have to kind of underweigh that in the, in the conversation as well. I think there are four options before us right now. One is do nothing. The other option is to amend the current policy with something that you're like, you're proposing. And the, or the other option is to look at the, one of the other two policies. And I personally, I'm, I'm in the vote with Ian.
I'm sorry, what was it?
The other two policies that were presented by town council.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Which you just, you just saw for the first time.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So I think it's, I think it's a little bit, I'll say premature to really weigh in on those two options. I, I've read through them both twice, but I think there'd be, need to be more thought and consideration, and here we are already in June. So, you know, from my perspective, again, going back on the legal piece of it, I would like to understand what the, I'll say, get out of jail legal process would be for a future board if someone came to, 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 to the town and said, I have a ceremonial flag that I believe is representative of a portion of this community, in fact, and it is, I get it, governmental versus non-governmental, but in fact, our government represents our community. That's where I get caught up with. So in, in the, in the motion as I'm presenting it, they would have to come and make their case that it's governmental speech by amending the flag policy a subsequent time. And by the way, a lot of these terms, we went over the last time. We talked about, you know, community flags and celebratory flags. And, and we, we, we withdrew all of that. We came with something much simpler. Right. And, and one of the two recommendations from town council is effectively the same wording that we have in the policy with a list of specific flags. And so I, I'm not talking about adding the words ceremonial flags into the policy at all. I'm just saying we have the right to fly, in addition to the American flag, you know, the Massachusetts State flag, the POW MAA flag, which also is technically a government speech ceremonial flag.
Right.
Right? Westboro Fire Department, Westboro Police Department, I would add the, the progress pride flag, the Westboro DPW, a flag for the Town of Westboro, and the Westboro Public Schools to that list. Okay. Are there any other?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Are there any other flags that should be considered in that motion? It rings out a little bit, I was curious if there's others. Last sentence? Oh, and excuse me, also, a recommendation of council add that no other flag shall be allowed to be flown on town-owned flag poles, as those flag poles in this policy are not intended to establish or serve to create a forum for private expression.
I'll second the amended motion.
Okay. Are there any other flags that we should consider?
Well, while we're thinking about that, because Ian, you brought up a great point, and I'd love for us to further consider that, so thank you. I don't have a thought on that now.
I don't either.
And so, but thank you for bringing it up. One question I have is kind of a simple one. What flag or, what flag poles are we talking about? We have many that are town, you know, one, two. I think our flag policy currently as it stands says that the one at the Rotary will only fly certain flags. So I think that would be excluded, as I, right?
That, that doesn't change.
Right. So we're talking about potentially the one at Forbes, the one at Bay State Commons, the, the one out here out front.
Shelby, real quick on that comment that you just made around Rotary. I'm just reading section two B of the policy, the current policy.
Yep.
It says, notwithstanding anything in this policy, the permanent flag staff on the Rotary shall remain dedicated solely to the display of the United States flag above all other flags. That to me implies that other flags are allowed to be flown, and that's how we're allowed to put the POW flag on. And I would think that there's no difference between this flag and any of the other flags that we put in the policy.
Permanent flag shall remain dedicated solely to the display of the United States flag above all other flags and nothing herein shall, shall require the board to replace the United States. So you, you mean physically, you're saying, like, above all, like, physically?
That's how it is now. I see the, and the POW is below it.
Solely. So we're talking about the staff on the Rotary shall remain dedicated solely to the display of the United States flag above all other flags. That to me implies that the other flags are allowed, and we're describing in the policy.
They're allowed to be below the?
Below, correct.
Okay, or it's, that, that language?
And that, just for the education of the board and the community, if, if, if in, if in Alan's example, you know, Italian Pride History Month came up, the United States flag policy does not allow the flag of another country to be flown lower than the United States flag.
Right, I remember talking about that.
So that can't happen. And that's something that has to happen in the future.
Right.
But. Okay, I, I guess I read, my understanding of two B was different, because two A says the flag code, which basically says on a single flag pole, the American flag is highest. So two B would be unnecessary. I thought above all was opinion that above all, the American flag flies, not other flags.
Right. I didn't think of it as a positional.
Not physical position.
Right, right.
But that's what it is. Yeah. That's what it is. I, are you agreeing though that it does say that it is positional? No, I, I think it's not positional. I think it's that. Above all other? We don't fly flags other than the American flag on that pole. We fly the POW flag out there.
We do.
Yeah, it's, it's under it.
Yeah.
No, but I don't think it's positional.
So the reason why I ask about, the, the reason why I ask about the flags is both, well, it's primarily practical, right? So I don't know offhand, other than the, I think, five that I just named excluding the Rotary, how many flag poles we have that are town flag poles. We also have school flag poles that we're not talking about here, that's out of our jurisdiction. So one, one approach the board might consider is being more specific as to which flag pole we would fly, in this case, the pride flag. So, or any other ceremonial flags. And, and part of that is logistics, part of it is budget. I mean, I know it's a flag, but, but you know what I mean, like, having Christie's staff run all around town, changing flags out, like, maybe we walk, maybe we crawl before we walk. And so the flag, I think that is most prominent in our downtown is right in front of the Forbes Municipal Building. That's the one that I would sort of suggest be that, and maybe Bay State Commons, because it's a place where people gather.
I would agree with those. If you wanted to limit the flags under section three A to those two flag poles, I, at this point, I'd support that.
I don't want to necessarily limit it, but I just.
Well, that's what you're saying.
No, I, I, you know what I mean. I mean, I'm just saying from a practical perspective.
From a practical.
Like this flag pole right here in this building, I don't know that it's long enough to, you know, wide, long enough to fly two flags.
I think I'm good for now.
So.
So you want the American flag to fly also? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I mean, like, I wouldn't replace the one on Town Hall with just the pride flag.
So are you saying the other two flag poles though, that it would be the American flag?
Yes. Oh, yes, always. To me, it would be American, POW, and then in this case, the, I wouldn't drop those other flags for this. Let me be very clear.
Well, so when I look at section three, my understanding is that it's required that the United States flag fly above all other flags on all locations. So you can't just take down the US flag and put.
Right.
The pride flag on the Town Hall or there. I just want to go again.
Yeah, no.
The other, the other point I would make is that if we, I'm not, I'm not worried about the town running around. We're talking about a flag that's going to be up for a month in futures, right? So it's not something that's going to happen, you know, that frequently, so to speak. And I can anticipate that in the future, because again, the pride flag, like potentially other flags, those people are going to want that flown on the most prominent place in town, which is the Rotary.
Can it not be in the Rotary? Is that?
So, so I, I guess it's interesting you say that, Patrick. My opinion is the Rotary is not the most prominent place, because it's one of the most dangerous places to look up and.
I get it, but every angle you come through the center of town, you see that flag flying above the trees.
You, you do, but as you get lower, I wonder, and again, I didn't go out there, I wonder if that flag would even, a third flag would be as prominent.
Can I just, logistically, I'm not sure that we can fly three flags on, I, I just don't know that we can fly three flags, like physically able to clip in three flags on existing flag poles.
Well, I do it on my flag pole. I don't know, I'm just saying.
I just don't, I mean, I.
I think ours have to, would have to repay to get new ropes and stuff.
I, I just don't know. I really just don't.
We might have to add clips.
Yeah, I think you just, but it's a fair point.
I don't know how, I don't know how that all works.
Well, I guess I can, I can, I guess I can say too, I, I don't think that. Well, I guess I can, I can, I guess I can say too, I, I don't think that, um, it would be favorable to this board to suggest that we take down, for example, assuming the American flag always flies, that's a given, to take down the POW flag, to fly the pride flag, I would not be supportive of that.
I agree. I would not be supportive of that either. And I would also say that this requires further conversation around the positioning, because if you were to put a third flag on, where does the POW flag fly in cour, in coordination with the, in this case, the pride flag? Is the pride flag below or above it?
I would say below it.
I mean, that's just, I mean, I think we'd have to add that to the policy as well. We have to make that very clear.
You know, people are like, wow, this is all about flags. But this is, this is real, like, I know people are like, just hang the flag, but we want to be thoughtful about this, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think, I'm not a flag expert, I don't know about wind intention and all of that. I think we could probably fly three flags on the big flag pole in front of Forbes, I believe, but I'm, um, down at Bay State, there's only one flag, and that is the American flag.
So would it be appropriate, I'm wondering, to make, just make, we've got a motion, we've got a second, right? That gets us to a point where all, where we can now fly these additional flags. Let Christie go out to staff, find out what's capable, you know, to do within these different locations, and, you know, I guess, tell us where it's, can make sense, at least this year.
Yeah.
Next year, it may make sense to do it on a different location, because we've upgraded the location. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what's capable, what Forbes versus Town Hall versus Rotary.
I'm not, I, I guess, I think it's, I'm open to Christie having those discussions, obviously. I want to kind of get further into the weeds here. I also feel like there's a responsibility kind of of the board to say here, and I don't want to, honestly, I don't want to put that on Christie to say, this flag, not this location, not that location. I think that's-
Well, just physically able, I think we'll dictate where it can go.
And yet, we need to make a decision tonight.
Well, we can make a-
Well, we don't have to.
So I'll, I'll-
We can make a decision on, 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 if we were going to allow this flag. I think that's the, the question in front of us. And I think if we make that decision, and again, I think if we allow Christie to go find out, hey, this flag, only one flag power allows us perhaps, maybe, right? And it's the Forbes building. Well, that's where it's going to go. Right? Because this year, that's all we can do. We're not going to spend, I don't know, hundreds of dollars or whatever it might cost to go redo the ropes on the Rotary, as an example. And next year could be a fu, future consideration. That's what I'm proposing, is let's do it where it's possible.
Sure.
We don't know where it's possible, so let's just have the vote on this first. Thoughts? You had a question?
Yeah, mine just, I mean, this is so recent, and so, so many things are coming up. I mean, I, I'm supportive of it, but I just feel like we're, we're scrambling, and we're going to make some sort of mistake here and put a policy that we're going to be revisiting anyways. But that doesn't solve it for doing it June of 2024, but I guess, hearing this and what I'm thinking is, we basically say, we're going to, we're supportive of it, we're going to move forward. It just may not happen in June of 2024, because, I mean, just the stuff about, I, I, do we do it or don't? I mean, I, I'm trying to decide flag poles, and I get things, oh, what about the Man Park? What about, I mean, we have flag poles other places, too.
Yeah, I didn't even think of that. You're right.
So, but I don't know, I don't, we probably have one of Veterans Freedom Parks, too.
Yep.
So, um-
Fire Station, yeah.
Fire Station has one, yeah. So you're already coming up with, with some. Um, so, that's just my thinking. I mean, it's, it's just, I haven't, I, I just don't know if we're, we're already talked enough about this, and we keep changing it.
I think we can get into those weeds in fut, future discussions. I think tonight is just a matter of-
I guess we're going to approve it tonight, but it may not fly this month, because we may not have figured out how to do it.
Right.
Well, yeah, I guess I would say if, if, if we vote to approve it, I would, I would like to think we could fly it this month, because otherwise, we shouldn't vote if we don't think that's practical. Right? Because then we could have a more robust discussion, and then it's not just something on paper. Like, they said they would do that, and then the flag, I think that's, like, worse, right? You know, even though it might be for legitimate reasons. So, I think we have a motion and a second. I, um, I don't think the motion is specific to the location. I would even, I would be comfortable in kind of saying, like, one of two locations, like, one or two locations. Forbes or Bay State Commons. Those are two very-
I would amend the motion to say that the flags listed under three A may be flown on the town-owned flag poles in front of Memorial Building and/or Bay State Commons, with the exception of the POW MIA, MIA flag, which may also be flown on the Rotary. It'd be explicit there. And that any flags on a pole with the American flag and the POW MIA flag will be flown below those two flags.
So, second.
So that handles the location and the order on the pole.
Actually, before you, can I just ask a question before your second?
Yeah.
With your original motion, Seal, was it specific that the, um, the Progressive Pride, the LGBTQ+ Pride, whatever we're calling it, is just for the month of June, or was it generic?
Good question. It should be just.
I think it's just for the month of June, but it's not flying
Yes.
year-round, is not what?
Yeah, it's, it's a-
So I don't know if that was in your motion, but I-
So, so, right, it wasn't in the motion, so with the listing of the Progressive Pride Flag in parentheses during June.
Second.
Sorry about that.
No, no, it's, again, the details, right?
Do you have that, like, written out, or I'm just curious, like, why, make sure we all-
I'm not going to lie to you, no.
I, I can, do I?
I'm going to have to go back to the recording for, for this discussion, quite honestly.
Do you want, do you want me to restate the motion?
Um, if you'd like to.
Okay.
If it'd be helpful for the rest of the board, if you guys want to hear it all.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think you can do it.
You don't think? I will. So, I move that we amend section three A of the flag policy such that the list of flags include the following. Massachusetts State Flag, the POW MIA Flag, the Westboro Fire Department Flag, the Westboro Police Department Flag, the Progressive Pride Flag in parentheses during the month of June, the Department of Public Works Flag, the Town of Westboro Flag, and Westboro Public Schools Flags, provided that any flag flying on a pole that includes the American Flag and POW MIA Flag fly below those two flags. Um, and with the exception that the POW, um, these flags may be flown on the poles, um, in front of the munis, Forbes Municipal Building and/or Bay State Common, with the exception of the POW MIA Flag, which may also be flown on the Rotary, and that no other flag shall be flown on town-owned flag poles as those flag poles in this policy are not intended to establish or serve to create a forum for private expression.
Second.
Well done.
Any further discussion on the motion?
I, I would just say, I, I'm in favor of this, and I'm in favor of us supporting the, the, specifically the, the Progress Pride Flag. Correct. Um, I, I think, because we've turned this around kind of quickly, I think there probably is some time when, in a couple months, when we have a little extra time in a meeting to sort of do a more thorough, you know, we should revisit it.
Yeah, we'll definitely get this on a future agenda, because I think we need to understand it. A lot of information was given to us in just the last few days, so.
When you say revisit it, revisit it, some of the questions we discussed here, plus what Ian had stated, okay.
Correct. Are, are there others that, of equal?
Yeah.
You know, that, that should be considered, things that, things of that nature?
Sure.
Um, in, sort of in that manner, to make sure we're, we are being inclusive.
Yep, absolutely.
Any more discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming for us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you to your family as well.
Blessing in government for the little ones.
Yes.
They're already asleep. No, I'm just kidding.
Really, it's still daylight, isn't it? All right. Uh, now, moving on to-
We have a, still have a proclamation. Proclamation.
Oh, that's right.
If we, if we-
I forgot. Yeah.
A motion, if the board is-
I move to approve the Pride Month proclamation as presented.
Second.
Do you want to read it?
Yeah.
I'm trying to find it.
So we have to vote, right?
Yeah, did you want to read the proclamation then?
Yeah, yeah.
Did you normally do?
Yeah.
As part of the motion?
Uh, sure. Do you want to read it?
I can read it.
Okay, you were on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Hold on, I've got to, I need to bifocal, so I've got to get this a little bit larger on the screen. Okay. I move that the Town of Westboro adopt the following proclamation acknowledging June 2024 as Pride Month, thank you. Whereas, the Town of Westboro is committed to creating a welcoming, safe, and healthy community for everyone, inclusive of all, and recognizing individual differences such as age, race, sexual orientation, gender identity, ethnicity, nationality, religion, socioeconomic status, and more. And whereas, the nation, this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, the Select Board calls upon the people of the town to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas, Westboro is committed to supporting the rights of all residents to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas, celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for Westboro's LGBTQ+ community, and is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. Whereas, the Town is fortunate to have residents, town employees, volunteers, business owners, elected representatives, and others who belong to the diverse LGBTQ+ community, and to contribute positively to the culture of our community. And whereas, the month of June is observed as Pride Month across the nation, now therefore be it resolved that the Select Board hereby declares and proclaims June 2024 as Pride Month in Westboro, and encourages all people to reflect on the challenges faced by the LGBTQ+ community in the pursuit of equality, celebrate and honor their contributions that have enriched our community and society, and recognize the ongoing work needed to foster greater understanding. Sign this ninth day of, well, eleventh day of June 2024.
The second?
Yeah.
Second is.
Okay.
Second in that motion, yes.
Terrific. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Alan, for reading that.
Thank you.
And thank you, Shelby, for it.
Yep, yep.
Okay, uh, moving on to item number five, Waste Management Pro, Waste, Waste Management Program Transition to Pay as You Throw and Approval of Program Coordinator Position.
Um, so I'm going to take this in two parts. Um, so the first is just an update. Um, you have a memo in your packet that gives a general update of where we're at. Um, similar to the update I gave at the last meeting. Um, so related to the haul, hauling contract or the contract with Harvey's. Um, we're continuing to work on that with them. We've met with representatives from Harvey's on May 28th, and identified a few items that require some follow-up. Um, I did want to mention for, for the board and the public that Harvey's is requesting a change in hours. Um, and so, we're still working through what that would look like. Um, and then, uh, we also, because we are not going to, we are not sure if we will complete this by the end of June, um, that we would potentially, at your next meeting, be asking you to, um, or, or the Board of Health to, um, to extend the contract, the current contract under the current terms. Um, that's obviously for our own residents to be able to continue to use the transfer station, but also, um, the current contract serves as a permit for the Harvey's to operate the transfer station in Westboro. Um, and so, by not having a contract in place, they also would not have a permit. So, um, so looking for some sort of extension. Um, but that would not in, impact the transition to Pay as You Throw. Um, so that's really just having access to the transfer station. The Pay as You Throw is really impacted by other contracts that we've already put in place. Um, so we had, did, you did authorize me at the May 14th meeting to sign the Way Zero contract. That's really the contract for the bags. Um, so I did move forward and finalize that, um, on June 3rd. Um, and those bags are contracted with, understanding the cost is the same as what was presented and approved by the board, which is a dollar for the small bags, two dollars for the larger bags. Um, we have sent many options for different retailers, um, for Way Zero, because part of that contract is for them to go out to the different retailers and set up, um, set up contracts with the retailers so that they can purchase them, um, and, and go through that process. So, um, so the list is, is robust. It also includes, um, some, some stores that are actually not in Westboro. We did hear, we had a, uh, info session at the Senior Center, uh, last week, and, you know, they, we were, we heard loud and clear that Market Basket in Shrewsbury, we're hoping, uh, to sell bags at, so we, that's one of the, the places on the list. Um, right now, we can confirm that Roach Brothers will be selling, um, these bags beginning June 17th. Um, and then we have, I had some other, uh, locations that have confirmed. I just don't have the specific date, so I'm just going to wait to, to release that, but we have a flyer that we'll be releasing on social media as the, they become available. Um, one of the things I wanted to show, and I'll do that in just a second, is the, um, the permits. Um, so part of what we've talked about is the need for enforcement. So that's something that we've been hearing from the community under our current program, the need for enforcement, and then the need for continued enforcement and more robust enforcement, as we move through into the, the Pay as You Throw. Um, so one of the things that I had told the board at the last meeting, was at the Board of Health, was amending their transfer station regulations, um, that same evening, so May 28th. And so they did move forward with that, um, state of statutory authority where they can create regulations, and then they can appoint agents to enforce them. Um, and so, uh, they did move forward with that, and one of the pieces of enforcement also is to make sure that permits are moving forward, or that folks are using appropriately receive, purchasing the permits, and that they're, um, they're tied to the vehicle. So we had a conversation at a meeting about, um, the need for permits where license or registration numbers would be written on them. So, this is the Town of Southborough permit. It's, uh, very similar to the stickers that are being purchased for the Town of Westboro. The colors are a little bit different, but similar, um, in that it would have the year, um, and then the number, and then we would write the license number on it, and it's a little bit hard to tell, but one of the reasons you can see kind of the, um, the glare, I guess, on the sticker is because there's a plastic sheet that goes over that, so it does have a protection of the, the written marker. Um, go back to my, I just wanted to show you the sticker. Um, sorry. Um, so the per, the permits are, will be available for purchase on June 17th as well, so you can purchase them at the Board of Health. Um, and you can also, you also will be able to purchase them online. Um, you do need to submit validation documentation, so photo ID and proof of residency. If you're purchasing them online, we are setting up a secure online portal, so that you can send that to us, um, in a secure way. Um, and then we would process that payment and mail out the sticker with the number written on it, the registration number written on it. Um, so related, also related to enforcement, um, as we mentioned, within the regulations, um, there is an opportunity for wardens. Um, I know Select Board Member Marshall and I can, can tell you that we have heard from people in the community who are interested, um, in serving in that role. So it's similar to the Sandra Pond Wardens, where they enforce a bylaw. Um, the, the same authority would be given to wardens for the transfer station, where they would enforce the Board of Health regulations as agents of that board. Um, so we did put out that volunteer opportunity. In addition, um, we've always intended to have staff, uh, help with enforcement. Um, so we have looked, we have considered different possibilities, but ultimately, what we've arrived at is that Program Coordinator Position, um, which some other communities do have. Um, at this point, it would be a temporary, part-time position, um, that would be fully funded through the grant. So you remember that I asked you to approve an implementation plan to submit to the state. Um, the, the purpose of really drafting that implementation plan, in addition to it helping lay out the process, um, was really to meet the requirements of the grant. So, um, so we have received that grant, and we are able to use it for this position. Um, let's see. And then, I just wanted to mention that we did, again, we had the information session at the Senior Center. It was about, uh, went for about two hours, and we had over a hundred residents attend. Um, so I think, um, it's always good to hear folks' questions, so that we can really improve our materials and our communication out to, to residents. I would say there's, there's some folks there that are concerned about the transition, but we also heard from people who think that, you know, this is the right direction. So, you know, definitely both, and lots of questions. Um, our next information session, it will be here in this room on June 18th at 6:00 PM. Um, all of them are on Westboro TV. Um, and so we're continuing, again, to develop educational materials. I think one of the, you, you saw this in the job description of the Program Coordinator, but, um, lots of, lots of talk about enforcement, but also really education. So making sure that people are understanding different opportunities that they have for, for cycling, um, you know, donation, all of those things, and really working on making sure that the community is aware of those options for old clothing or furniture, or, you know, all, all sorts of things. So, really trying to work with, uh, the residents, uh, understanding that a particular- So really trying to work with the residents, understanding that particularly in the first several weeks, we'll just need to support that transition.
Thank you, Kristi. Questions? Go ahead.
Just, first of all, I want to thank Kristi in particular for all of her work on this. I, I and others have been supporting cast members, but she's done a lot of work, and this is not as an excuse or anything. It's complex. It's not just simple as let's have a bag and let's put trash in a bag. It's, it's layered beyond time to explain here, but I think we've done a good job. I think we have learned in this process. It's a big change for Westboro. There are, I think, 155 other communities, if I'm, not, not 155. I shared the map with you, Kristi.
You did, yeah.
I can't remember, and I can share it with the board. The, the point is, is that we're not alone in Pay As You Throw. Lots of communities across Massachusetts do this, whether it's at curbside or it's bringing it to the transfer station. I think that, uh, thank you, Kristi. Thanks. Yeah. It was actually, I thought that that was pretty helpful to see. So the green is where Pay As You Throw is required as part of a curbside program. The darker pink is a drop-off requirement, so the, and, and you'll notice that that's a lot. And then both is the, I guess, pinkish-purple color, the lighter color, which are fewer communities.
We're white.
And we are white because we don't do it yet. Right. So.
And this is 2022.
And this is 2022. Right. Thank you. Right. So I think that this, for both the public and the town, and speaking for myself and someone's been very involved in this process, this has been and will continue to be a process of education to the community and reciprocal to the town as we listen to the feedback. Kristi and I were just talking the other day about some of the unanswered questions, and we recognize there are some, like, what's going to happen, I'm making up when I need to get rid of my grandmother's rocking chair and no one wants it. Like, I've tried to get rid of it, but no one wants it. What do I do with that? Right? So there are some questions that we have to answer to, to make sure that, you know, we have the, the right answers, and we'll continue to improve this program, and then we'll educate some more, and then enforcement is also part of this. But I, I, I will just say, I think there's been a little bit of craziness online about, like, the enforcement part of it and so on and so forth. I think that, you know, we're, we're all adults. If we understand the rules, we can just follow the rules. Right? And whether it's a paid, part-time coordinator doing the enforcement, or if volunteers want to step up and be part of that and be part of education, then good for them, and, and we should thank them for their service. And if they don't, then that's fine, but we're like good people in Westboro and we'll follow the rules, so we don't have to get all crazy about it. And I'm happy to answer any questions as your representative to the work group and that I can.
Thank you, Shelby.
Yep.
Yeah. Shelby, thank you very much. Thank you, Kristi. So the Waste Management Program Coordinator, right? It is funded through the grant on a part-time basis. It would require a vote at town meeting to become funded under the Board of Health, correct?
It would require a vote of this board to make it a permanent position on the classification plan, but we would need, right, we would need the town meeting to appropriate money for, for that.
Right. Right. And so, you know, currently no plans for that. It is specifically funded by this grant and not an additional cost of this program currently.
Right. And we want to evaluate, you know, the need for it and what the program looks like, so. Right. Correct.
Good. Thank you.
I mean, I guess the one thing I would add is, when EL Harvey's was purchased and we were told that the transfer station was going to close, there was an uproar. And so this started as a project, how do we keep the transfer station open? But what it really did is it triggered a deeper examination of the issue. And part of what's happening here, and it created an opportunity to solve other problems. We had an enforcement and an abuse issue at the transfer station long before there was any discussion of Pay As You Throw. You know, anecdotally, a couple of weeks ago, I was there on a Saturday about a half hour before closing, and while I was dumping my cardboard in, eight cars backed into the dumpsters for the dump, three had stickers on the back bumper, four did not, and a local landscaping company dumped an entire first-size pickup truck full of trash in as well. Don't know if they had a sticker on that vehicle. Okay? So we've had a, and so the fact that we're making a change and had to renegotiate the contract, we're looking at the cost of keeping the, the transfer station open to the public and the way to do it. It's an opportunity to incent behavior that reduces cost. Behind the scenes, our taxes pay for how much trash gets burnt by wheelbrader and milbury. And if we improve the percentage of recycling, that volume goes down, that cost will go down as well and mitigate, if not reduce taxes, mitigate future tax increases as the continue, as the cost of managing waste continue to rise. And so what started out as, hey, let's keep the transfer station open because the people want it, has turned into an effort that is, we've got, you know, keep it open issue, we've got an abuse and enforcement of the transfer station is an issue, we have overall cost of waste management, near term and long term, all rolled into one. And so this is a great step in the direction of better managing all of those things. And it is complex with a lot of moving parts, and for Kristi and members of the committee initially, and now Kristi and town staff and everyone involved, it's, you know, thank you. It's a lot of work, and I think we're going to come out on the other side of this in a really good position.
And if I may, I was remiss, so I know our DBW Director's in our audience tonight. He has been involved in our Board of Health Representative and our Board of Health Director. So it has been a broad effort. I know there's some confusion that maybe Board of Health hasn't been involved. They've been very involved in this process, just like me being a delegate to that committee. They have theirs as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll just add my comments and cut a couple of questions. So first of all, I echo everything that has been said. Thank you very much for all the work on this, Kristi, and the entire, all the staff that's been involved, and yourself, Shelby, certainly. So I, I guess, specific to the, well, actually, I'll do this first. I did have a resident reach out to me and ask a question about a grace period, and if that has been considered, at least, you know, not formally, obviously, inside of the, inside of the Board of Health's policy, but, you know, similar to what was done, for example, with the restaurants on the changeover from plastic to non-plastic. You know, residents have a certain amount of trash bags they have at home. You know, is there a month or two where it's just informational, they come and, oh yeah, I threw it in a white trash bag. You, you let me know, you know, within a month or two, you know, I've got it. Nobody's allowed it after a certain period of time. You know, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
That, that, I think the board has done a good job telegraphing this change to July 1st for a very long time, and that is not what the town committed to in the implementation plan. So the vote that you took was to implement July 1st. That being said, I think, as I mentioned, there's an education period, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to create the impression that that means that you don't have, you're not expected to follow the, the rules, so.
In regards to the job description, I just want to make sure I understand. So this is a six-month position in theory, a temporary position. Is there any potential for reoccurrence of, of the grant in the future if we wanted to extend this out?
I believe that there is opportunity to apply again for the grant, and it's, the amount of the grant is dependent on the number of people using the program, but I, I don't know that it would immediately follow that six-month period. It might be the next fiscal year.
Okay. So the, 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 the Program Coordinator would be a warden as well, if I'm understanding this correctly, because there's an enforcement piece of it there. But as you identify volunteers or otherwise individuals who come forward to be wardens, they would train up those individuals, and then after this temporary period, that individual would, that position would go away, or they could be asked to be a volunteer as well? Is, I'm just.
Well, as I mentioned, we would take the next six months to identify what our needs are, and then we'll have to address it. I mean, there could be other opportunities that we might, it depends, you know, it really depends on what the enforcement looks like. They, they're, they wouldn't be necessarily a warden. They would, they would enforce the regulations as an agent of the Board of Health.
Okay. Will this individual and wardens, all wardens be badged as wardens?
You mean, like a constable badge?
Yeah. Like a warden? Yeah. So that they're easily identified?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we can, we make IDs for all of our inspectors and anyone. Yeah.
Do you anticipate, one of the comments inside or one of the requirements of these individuals is the work environment in regards to, you know, all weather, heat, et cetera? I'm just curious, will we be providing any sort of clothing allowance or any accommodation for protective clothing?
No.
Being that it's an industrial area?
No.
When do you anticipate having job descriptions for wardens in the future? Is that something that would just be going through once there's a budget process in place? We would then create specific warden positions?
I just want to make sure that we're clear on what we're talking about. So there's the Program Coordinator who has enforcement authority under the Board of Health.
Yep.
There's a job description for the board to approve tonight, and then it would get advertised. Wardens are agents of the Board of Health. Their only responsibility is to enforce the regulations, so there is not a separate job description for them, and they are fully employed or appointed by the Board of Health under their statutory authority. So they would not be part of the budget process.
So they would not be, they would be, in that scenario, they're, or in that situation, they're purely volunteers, they wouldn't be employees of the town? Is, I don't?
That's exactly how they're proposed, and that's how it's written in the regulations, yes.
That's exactly the same as the Sandra Pond wardens.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, I guess I, just a, a general comment, I am very concerned, I think with, with the plan to roll out makes sense. I think, and I'm supportive of it, in regards to, I mean, this is just my concern in general, is that I am concerned with the equivalence of Sandra Pond wardens to, you know, wardens at the transfer station. There's going to be far more iterations or interactions between these wardens and individuals than you would have at Sandra Pond. I think there's also, it's a sensitive subject, so I'm just making that point, is that this is, there is sensitivity out there, so I am looking forward, obviously, I'm hopeful that the community is very positive on this and that we all will be polite and courteous as, as people use the transfer station, and I will be definitely keeping an ear to the ground in regards to, you know, personally, in regards to what, what happens down there. So I appreciate, again, all the work that you've been doing, and Shelby and the entire team.
Can, I just want to add, so the, the warden position, the, the transition to Pay As You Throw and the success of this program is not contingent on volunteers becoming wardens. It's an opportunity that we were asked to provide to certain individuals who wanted to do it. I don't know if they will do it. We did have, actually, the Sandra Pond wardens come and talk about their concerns about their, about their interactions with folks at the, at the reservoir, and so that led to conversations with our police chief. So I think, I just, I don't want the impression to be that becoming a warden is a scary thing. I think that, you know, that's the purpose of having a more dedicated employee working with this, and, you know, we are, I guess we're all keeping our ear to the ground, you know.
Yeah, I would.
Well, let me, let me respond back to that. So I, I think you're absolutely right. There is no contin, there is no requirement that we have wardens to roll this out, but I think we all are in agreement that enforcement is going to be key to the success of this. And.
I disagree. Residents following the regulations is key.
You're pretty hopeful, Alan.
Is key to success.
Honestly.
And, and it's.
Yes, yes and yes.
You know, yes, I'm, I'm hopeful, but let's be clear, that's the expectation. Right? The, the wardens can be there to say, hey, don't forget, you know, you're not in the, you're not in the maroon bags, you know, you got to have the maroon bags next time.
To your point earlier, though, this kind of all ballooned out of the require, you know, you know, started with the whole, you went through the whole history here, but it, but one of the things that, you know, is clear is that we have a waste management issue, right? We have too much volume. And in order to reduce that, a big part of the success of this program has to be in the enforcement. We hope that everybody does the right thing, that they put the right things in the right bags in the right locations, and we're all good citizens and we, we do the right things. But my point is, while it is not a requirement to have enforcement, it still will.
Totally.
Not, not enforcement, wardens. We have enforcement if we have this position, as well as the, the Board of Health positions all have within their job descriptions that they will do, that they will attend or go to the different transfer station. They just can't do it all of the hours that it's open.
Right.
Right.
So the warden, again, the wardens are not, the success of the program and enforcement is not contingent on the wardens. It's just an opportunity.
It is exactly to make it as successful as possible. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I think that the, the wardens will contribute to, to the success. That's the hope of it. I think the contingency portion Kristi has made, and I, and I, you know, I think we should all be celebrating the fact that enforcement by this coordinator position is even being discussed, using Alan's example of three P, three cars or four cars showing up without stickers. Opportunity for education. Hey, how come we don't have a sticker? Where are you from? Right? Like, that's an opportunity, because if, if those people are going and adding to tonnage, that is increasing the impact on taxpayers.
Correct.
So enforcement, for everyone that is moaning and groaning, quite frankly, about this change, and I get it, change is hard, right? Like, I remember when the change happened when I lived in Maine, you know, as a, as a much younger person, right? And I was like, oh, I got to go buy the orange bags, right? You know? But you get over it, right? So you'll get over that hurdle, but I think the incentive of the ability to decrease trash, which is a statewide goal by 2030, right, which this board has, has embraced to be part of that, you know, solution or contribute positively, and lower the future impact of cost as it relates to, and keeping the transfer station open are all like check, 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 positive things that we're doing here. And I'm not, I'm just looking down this wave, right? Like, I think that's all good, and, and it is candidly, it's frustrating that, that I'm not hearing more of that in the public, but it is what it is. I would also say that, and I, and I have to be very direct, while we're still in the process of negotiating the contract with Harvey, and I don't want to kind of get into a lot of detail, one of the questions been asked is why is the town dealing with enforcement? Why isn't the vendor, in this case Harvey Waste Connections, dealing with enforcement? And they have said flat out, unequivocally, we do not want to do enforcement. We will support Pay As You Throw. You can put it into our contract. Yes, like, that's, we'll support it. We do not want to do enforcement. So if the town, through the people, want to have the transfer station, and we want to reduce the impact on taxes, and we want to reduce our trash, we have no choice but to address the enforcement component, however we do that, whether it's through volunteer wardens or through, you know, in this case, which I think is a great use of the, the grant money. So anyway, probably going on here, but I, I just, I think that it's easy to kind of focus on negativity, not by the board, negativity in the changes as opposed to the opportunity that we have here. So, you know, if, we'll, we'll continue to improve the program, make education and enforcement go hand in hand, and you're right, people, you know, we have stop signs. Supposed to stop at a stop sign. We're going to implement this. You have Pay As You Throw. If you want to use a transfer station, put it in, in a maroon bag.
Yep. I appreciate everyone's comments. Is there any other comments or questions?
No. I would move to prove the job description for Waste Management Coordinator, H4, at 19 hours per week, and further to amend the classification plan to include this temporary part-time position.
Second.
Oh, pardon me. Did we actually review the coordinator position? I think we just had the update.
Now we're going to have the discussion about it.
Sorry.
Sean, did you have a specific questions?
Well, no, but I think earlier Kristi was like, I'm going to take this in two parts, and I think we just covered the first part.
I just, I just introduced part two, yes.
Okay. Got it. Maybe it was a while ago.
Yeah.
No, I was just, the, so the request is to create this, again, this temporary part-time position that would be under the Board of Health as an agent, but funded through the grants. but funded through the grants. So some of the responsibilities are overseeing the program, serving as a resource to residents who have questions, ensures residents participating in pay-as-you throw or utilizing the transportation or transfer station, are complying with all state laws and regulations, state and local laws and regulations. They also would be responsible for training and coordinating any volunteer wardens if we have any folks who apply. And then they would assist with the distribution of educational materials, that's obviously going to be critically important as we move forward. But part of those materials, in addition to explaining the program, are really to, to give folks information about other opportunities to reduce waste. So one of the things we talked a lot about at the senior center info session was composting. And the opportunity to do that, that's really a considerable percentage of folks' waste. So there's that type of education as well. Waste disposal, it's not a requirement, but hazardous waste disposal, household items, donation, et cetera. They would also provide updates and compliance information to the Board of Health and/or the select board as requested. So we would expect that they would help us provide updates to the board, the select board, as to how things are going. And then certainly would, would, been meeting with the Board of Health, should someone be fined or have their permit revoked. And then they would, that would be their opportunity to speak with the Board of Health. And then supports sale of the transfer station permits and retailers as needed. So just making sure folks know where they can buy them and how they can get them and things like that. So, that's, that's the, the job description.
Looks good.
Fully supportive.
Yeah, motioned and seconded?
Yeah, so before we have a vote, just a point of discussion, we did receive in our packet a comment, a very thoughtful comment from a member of the community, asking about why do we have to have this coordinator position now if we're just changing the bags? Why all the, you know, why this need? And I think, I think we've had that discussion here, I hope that person feels like that question's been addressed. And again, I would just reiterate that, I think that by, by utilizing the grant money, it positions the town in the best possible way to handle education and enforcement. So I think it's a smart decision.
Without costing, without going on taxes, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the big key.
Yep, yes, thank you.
Terrific, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Christie.
Thank you.
All right, on to item six, sore update with Public Works Director. Welcome, Chris.
Thanks for your patience.
Good evening, Chris Pan, Director of Public Works. So just as we've done over the past month or so, providing a quick update on where we stand in terms of our progress towards revising our flow allocation. So we had a, as, as a follow-up to the meeting we had with the Lieutenant Governor, we had a great meeting with some leaders from the DEP. And, you know, we were able to kind of explain to them where we stand and get some feedback from them on long-term future steps and things we might need to do, open a dialogue, establish some relationships. Shrewsbury was also present and that was helpful for them to kind of say where they stand. So good progress there, it was very preliminary, but will kind of lead to future steps for us in helping us long-term in terms of addressing our capacity. Near-term, in the next, over the next two weeks or so, we'll be circulating the draft table that will recommend our allotment or allocation of flow across all sectors. We'll be doing that amongst the staff. That's primarily focused on, I, I know we've talked a lot about where we stand now in our current use, but this table importantly is also a projection of future use and that, that's what allows us to make a determination on how to allocate flow. And so feedback from other staff members like planning and community development, those sorts of things are helpful in terms of identifying future needs and then we can refine the table and then hopefully soon we'll be presenting that to you. And then beyond that, once we have the table pretty close to where we think it's gonna land, we need to implement. And so I think very generally lifting the moratorium will be tied to implementation of this table. So we'll have this table, we have to have some rules that are gonna go along with how we're gonna allocate flow, whatever flow we might have. And then, and then go from there. So that's where we stand right now.
Thank you, Chris.
It's moving pretty quickly. It's great, great update.
Glad to hear all the communications are happening.
Can I ask just a question that's been asked of me of, would we, not necessarily through a public hearing, that would we anticipate any sort of public forum to, once the findings have been presented, to answer questions other than, obviously, you mentioned you'd be presenting here to the board, which is a public, obviously, meeting. But I, I guess a more, I'll call it interactive, kind of like we've done with the pay-as-you throw, so that people can ask. I, I've had questions specifically from members of the business community, ask if, like, is there gonna be an opportunity to kind of ask questions and understand it rather than just hear a presentation through the board? And, and I guess I'm not asking an answer yes or no, I would just ask perhaps for consideration, because I don't know what the findings are gonna be. It may be beneficial to the community to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we would have any reason to say that shouldn't happen if, if that's what's desired. I, I don't think it's gonna be as exciting as everybody thinks it is. It's gonna be a chart with some numbers and you're gonna read it and you're gonna just see kind of where we stand. And that's gonna drive, you know, decisions for, for lots of people. But yes, if that's something that everybody deems appropriate, then we could do something like that, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's, you know, look, I've, I've learned a lot about dump trucks and little things that go off the back because you do a great presentation, Chris, right, and why we need it and the logic behind it. And while we're not talking about those kind of pictures, right, I mean, I don't, maybe, maybe there will be pictures, I don't know. I think it would be helpful for folks to, those who are interested to be able to say, so how many, I understand what that number means? Or when you say about this, like, I just think that there are nuances in presenting that, that we may not be able to achieve here, that's all.
I, I would suggest, when we get to that point, we present here and kind of see where we land. And you can make a determination as to whether you, you think that would be valuable and if it is, then we can potentially do that.
Because you would also have the opportunity through Patrick to decide whether or not you wanted to take comment or questions at that point.
Yep, yep, fair, thank you. Yep, good, thanks.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
So I, I'm sorry, the timeline, you said a couple of weeks, you guys are gonna circulate it internally, so we would hear maybe back July-ish?
I, I'm not, I don't know exactly what your meeting schedule is for the next month, but I suspect it would be July, yes.
Okay, just, I know there's interest, so, thank you, yep. Great, thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. All right, next one is, Chris, you're up as, as well. Prove the stormwater engineer job description and amendment to the classification plan.
This is just the creation of the position, we talked a lot about this through the budget process. As noted in your packet, the, in 2020, before we actually had the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, the staff, the staffing study recommended the addition of a stormwater engineer. So really, their position would be intended to address the requirements. This position is funded through the Enterprise Fund, which we talked about during the budget process. So you do have a draft job description, it's at the same level in terms of salary that we had anticipated in the budget. But certainly Chris is the right person to answer questions for you about the specifics of the duties of the role.
Questions? I did, I did have, I have just a couple here on the seat. So I guess, will this position be part of the business one-stop process?
What, what, I'm not...
I'm just imagining a, a business coming to town, they wanna, you know, build a building or change runoff on their property or whatever.
Oh, you mean the one-stop meeting?
Yes, exactly.
Stop meeting, yes, well, I mean, the DPW is part of that, so whoever is appropriate for whatever the topic is shows up, so yes.
Okay. And then I just noticed, or I was noticing when I was reading this, one, two, three, four, five. I believe it's the fifth bullet or the fifth paragraph on page two of the job description.
What does it start with?
I, I wanna, I think we need to add stormwater to the grant programs, so it says, provides a decision.
It's the fifth one?
Yeah, so prepares estimates for in-house projects and grant applications. I'm thinking that it should say prepares estimates for stormwater projects and grant applications. Or actually, one, yeah, no, manages the implementation, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. One, two, three. Manages the implementation of stormwater grant programs accepted by the town, including managing project budgets, approving... So I think it needs to be specific to stormwater. The way it's written right now is it sounds like they're kind of managing the implementation of grant programs across the entire town. And I don't think that's the intention.
I guess I don't, that's okay, but if there's, if this individual's got a talent for managing grants and there's a small, and it's, you know, there's the stormwater engineer, if there's something tangentially related, you'd want them to be able to manage that grant as well?
The stormwater aspects of that grant.
We, I mean, we can always, every job description has other duties as assigned.
Okay.
But this is specifically funded under stormwater, so I, I think it's implied. So it's, I, I don't think, if you want to add that, I think it's fine, but I'm not sure it's necessary.
I, I think...
That's a clarification, yeah.
Yes, that's a clarification.
Yep, yep.
And just in general, we had a section which talked about, I, I guess, I, I, in general, as we look at these different job descriptions in the future, I'm wondering if there's a, if it's appropriate to add any sort of desire around additional language abilities? Just because there's a number, I, I know that there's a lot of people in our community where English is not the first language and that includes businesses as well. So I'm just food for thought for futures, we should probably start to consider putting that language in here as well, as a desirable skill. That was all. Any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, can I get a, a motion?
Sure. I would move to approve the stormwater engineer job description as presented and to amend the classification plan by adding the position at grade H5.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Item eight, delegate appointing authority for the Housing Partnership to the Trust.
I can do that. So as the, the board of the public might remember, we had an article at town meeting that authorized the select board to request the petition to the General Court for a charter change that would enable the select board to delegate appointing authority for the Housing Partnership Committee to the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, where the trust could either serve as that committee as a committee of the whole or create a subcommittee within certain guidelines. There are three aspects to this change that have happened so far to date following that town meeting vote. One, the petition to the General Court was made and was approved. It's chapter eighty-seven of the Acts of 2024, recently signed by the governor, I believe it early May, end of April, early May. Also, at that town meeting, there was a change to the bylaw for the Housing Trust that added the responsibility as an authorized power of the trust, if delegated, so delegated by the select board. And that article passed town meeting was approved by the Attorney General, so it's in effect. And the trust itself had to modify its declaration of trust, include the same wording as the bylaw change. The trust followed its procedures and its articles, made the change, voted, and those have been recorded, approved and recorded by the Worcester County South Registry of Deeds. So given that, if the select board is still supportive and inclined, the motion is to delegate. I can say that in the last four weeks, we've been contacted by five developers looking for guidance around affordable housing components for their project. And as, as recently as this afternoon, we had an initial greeting meeting with a developer who's converting a property into residential units. And not only, our conversation was about increasing the affordability component from the required twenty percent to twenty-five. And they're looking for guidance for, through the state programs, they're looking for potential local subsidy from the trust. So the trust in many ways has started doing the work of the Housing Partnership Committee. The word is out there that we're willing to work with developers to help them find their way through it and ease the process and they're coming to us. Even some in the very early, we, we own this land and we're thinking of doing X, what does it mean? And what, what would we need to do and how do we figure this out? So I think it would benefit not only the work of the trust, but the town as well.
Thank you, Alan.
Would, Alan, would you like to make your motion or...
Sure. So I move pursuant to the Town of Westboro Charter, Article Three, Section Three Dash Two, Subsection A, and General Bylaw, Article Seventeen, to delegate the appointing authority for the Housing Partnership Committee for the town to the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, such that the trust may appoint the Housing Partnership Committee either one, as a committee of the whole of the trust, or two, as a subcommittee comprised of trustees and or residents with at least one trustee as a member.
One clarification on your motion, you said subsection A, did you mean...
I'm sorry, subsection B, sorry.
So I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Great work by the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust.
Keep it going.
All right. On to, general item nine, letter of support for House Bill Four Six Seven Nine, an act relative to bidding requirements for certain affordable projects in the Town of Westboro Affordable Housing Trust. Alan, you want to take that one too?
Sure, so as you recall, at annual town meeting, town meeting voted on a warrant article that authorized the select board to petition the General Court with a home rule petition that would exempt two properties being considered for affordable housing development from aspects of state procurement laws. Representative Donahue was kind enough, after the select board voted, to submit that petition, to submit it to the legislature. It's before the appropriate committee, they're, they're actually moving very quickly on this. Normally, we don't get before, I'm surprised it happened in this session. But they contacted through Representative Donahue, asking for written testimony and support, which is a little unusual, but not surprising, just sort of the way the legislature's moving these days. And so before you is a draft of a letter to the appropriate contacts and the representatives on the committee in support of the action. And the reasons for the support, one of which, we've, we've been having technical assistance meetings with Massachusetts Housing Partnership on these two properties, forty-five High Street Extension and Six Beach Street. They estimate that this act will lower the cost of any project there by twenty percent. In addition to making it potentially eligible for loan and tax credits or tax credit financing mechanisms. And, you know, one of the challenges the trust faces right now, HLC's priority is projects with thirty or more net new affordable housing units. So any tool we have to lower the cost outside of a state subsidy, which we're unlikely to get, will benefit our ability to get this, this project moving forward.
This is great work, Alan, fantastic.
Question, so what other boards are you, are you also reaching out to to provide support? I imagine the Planning Board could send a letter?
So...
Are we just moving fast?
The request was, we're moving fast and the request was on behalf of the town. So that would be the select board is who they're looking for. And Ed Bain is Chair of the Trust, of the Trust, and the trustees is writing a similar letter on behalf of the trust.
And it's due tomorrow?
It's due tomorrow, we learned of this Thursday afternoon.
Got it.
I think at four thirty.
Anybody else meeting tonight?
Great question, Sean.
Yeah, it's, it's who is, we're actually the only town board where we could get to sign an agenda in time to get, to get it in. It's moving fast, so we're, we're running to catch up to the cart.
So I'll move to submit testimony as presented on House Bill Four Six Seven Nine.
Second, as presented.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in... Seeing none, all those in favor? Great work.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
So do you have that for us to sign, Athiya?
I do.
All right. Do that later, or?
Yeah, you have a couple things to sign tonight, so I was just.
Yeah, well, just a later, it's part of the package, thank you. All right. All right, request for appointments and reappointments, um, to the youth commission and annual reappointments. Uh, I will recuse myself on the appointment of, uh, individuals to the youth commission, as my wife works in the, uh, for the town and the Department of Youth and Family Services. So Ian, I'll let you take it over.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'll move us forward, uh, we have letters from, uh, and it's incorrect on our agenda, but it's Lydia Groves and Karen Samuel, those letters are in our packet. Um, both, uh, have been recommended by the youth commission for appointment as youth members. Uh, Mrs. Grove, Ms. Grove, sorry, Ms. Groves and Ms. Samuel are rising juniors, and their appointment term is for two years, so this is for two new appointments to the youth commission for youth members. Open it up for any questions or comments.
Great letters of interest and excited to move forward with these appointments.
I just wanted to note for the board that, um, we are using that new module for the website for, um, folks who are applying for vacancies, with the youth commission, uh, for youth appointments, it's a little bit different, which is why you're not seeing it in the new standard form.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
And these are two-year terms, right?
Two-year terms, yes.
So I would move to appoint Lydia Groves and Karen Samuel as youth members to the youth commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Hey, moved in second, any further comments? All those in favor? That's four to zero for being present. And now I will retire and return gavel.
See, I lost your touch. All right, and we'll now move into, um, uh, Christie, do we need to do a, um, do we need to approve your appointments?
Uh, no, I, um, you don't, you don't approve them, there's no concurrence required, it's, um, I just have to give you notice that I made the appointments, and then, um, you can.
I just saw your motion move to appoint the reappointments approved.
Right, well, so some of them are yours, some of them are your appointments. Um, with the, with the town manager appointments, they take effect fifteen days after the day that I notice, I provide notice, so I'm providing notice. Um, unless the select board, within that period, by a majority vote, rejects the appointments.
And those are the three municipal building committee constable and disability?
Correct, yeah.
They weren't labeled, so that's okay.
So.
That's for our notice, but it's not one that we have to.
Correct.
Right.
Approve.
Right, so it's Al Gordon to the municipal building committee, it's a reappointment. Uh, Al Gordon is constable, is a reappointment, and Heather Crump to the disability commission, which is also a reappointment. So those are the three that, that I have appointed.
Terrific, thank you for them being willing to do that work.
Yep. Would you like a motion to appoint individuals as presented?
Yeah, I can read the names, you can read the names.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I think just, I think that was the recommendation, that we should read all the names, but do you want?
Yep, I got it. Um, so, um, I would move to appoint Al Turnus to the Veterans Advisory Board, Cindy Dubois, uh, DuBois, Historical Commission, Daniel Scher, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission Delegate, Del Richmond, Veterans Advisory Board, Diane Collins, Council on Aging Board, Gary Kessler, Conservation Commission, Gary Bowman, Sandra Pond Wardens, Guido Lernardo, Council on Aging Board, Jay Marshall Preston, Veterans Advisory Board, John Gelchuk, Open Space Preservation Committee, Peter Flynn, Sustainable Westboro, Roberta Brown, Westboro Spirit Committee, Sarah Rundell, Affordable Housing Trust, Suzanne Parr, Act of Transportation Safety Committee, and Todd Alexander, Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm hoping I didn't have to read their term.
This was on the second page.
It's on the other page, do I need to read those?
I think you can just say as presented.
As presented.
As presented, because the terms vary. Okay.
We just wanted everyone to hear.
Yeah, no, no, and thank you, sorry, just, it was like, oh no, um, yes, so that's my motion.
Second.
Seeing, uh, any further discussion?
Just appreciate them all agreeing for the reappointments.
Absolutely, very important work.
Yep.
Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Terrific, thank you. Moving on to, um, request for interdepartmental transfers.
Uh, yep, so we did get to interdepartmental transfers today, um, which were ones that we were just watching. Um, so the first one is an interdepartmental transfer for the Board of Health, uh, five thousand dollars from salary and wages line, um, that's available because they replaced um, their administrative assistant, and so there was a savings during that period. Um, and then, uh, moving the five thousand to the Board of Health expenses, um, the need for this is really based on, um, the, the contracted service for monitoring tuberculosis cases.
So I'll move, uh, to approve the interdepar, approve the interdepartmental transfer to move five thousand dollars from Board of Health wages, uh, to Board of Health expenses as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And, do you want to make the second one, or?
Well.
Uh, sorry, so.
Yeah, gotta go.
Present it, yeah.
I'm sorry, uh, so the second one is for the finance department. Um, this is also a transfer of five thousand dollars from salary and wages. Um, this one you have heard much about, so the, we've had, obviously, vacancies in, um, in the finance department, and even though, just for the public, even though we have brought in interim, um, interim folks to serve in those roles, those are paid, those are contracted, so they're paid out of the expense line, so we do have savings in the salary and wages. Um, and, and the reason for the need in expenses is because of those contracts, so, um, looking for a five thousand dollar transfer from salary and wages to expenses in the finance department.
So I'll move to approve the intermar, interdepartmental transfer, moving five thousand dollars from, uh, finance salaries and wages to finance expenses, as presented.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Christie, and you. All right, on to item twelve, the FY twenty-six budget process, Christie.
We have not even started FY twenty-five, um, but we're already thinking about FY twenty-six.
You make me feel old.
Um, so I actually, um, I had some good conversation with the chair of the Advisory Finance Committee, um, and then it was at their June third meeting, we're trying, myself and our interfinance director are trying to attend more of their meetings, just be a resource. Um, also, we had interdepartmental transfers, um, and so I was able to speak to them about some thoughts that, that we've had internally about, um, the FY twenty-six process, so I wanted to share the board, this with the board as well. Um, so we're always looking for ways to improve our process, uh, I would say John Steinberg and I did meet with, um, Mr. Savoy, who has come to several meetings. Um, so we went, we were able to go through some of his, uh, comments and suggestions. Um, we've also certainly have received other thoughts from other folks, and, um, we've raised, uh, the need to really be thinking about our budget process at the finance team meeting. Um, one of the things that we've really sort of honed in on was the September Budget Summit, so we didn't start doing the, the budget summits until twenty, um, until twenty nineteen, and, um, I think that we've, I think we're good on the January Budget Summit, we get some pretty good feedback on that. Um, certainly always looking for improvement, but the September Budget Summit, I think, could be more effective, and so, um, one of the things that we had mentioned to the Advisory Finance Committee is that, um, if there are certain things that we, that folks want to see or understand better at that, um, you know, there's opportunity there, right now, we present the closeout of the previous fiscal year, um, and then we present budget pressures that we expect, um, from the school and the town side, and then we also bring, and we might bring in a, a, um, town department head if there's something like large on the horizon with them. So I think that's valuable, um, but we think that it could be even more effective, that meeting, because it's the only time that we have the Advisory Finance Committee, the Select Board, and the School Committee, um, in a joint meeting. Um, members of the School Committee do come and sort of view the Budget Summit in January, but that's not, they're not part of that, that meeting. Um, as, as in, they don't have an open meeting. So one, one thing that we did last year was we started talking a little bit more about revenues, it's really difficult. That's really, really early, but I know that we've heard that folks want to hear more about revenues, so, you know, we can talk about that. Um, something that we came, something that has come up and was actually presented to the Select Board, I mean, sorry, the Advisory Finance Committee and a couple, by a couple different folks, is the idea of having a goal, a budget goal. Um, as, I should say some, I was gonna say some of you, but as Ian probably remembers, um, the Select Board did set a goal, um, for the budget back in, I think, twenty sixteen of, um, no more than two percent increase over the prior year, not including new growth. Um, and, and I think we've, we've shown a couple times that we don't regularly meet that goal. Um, so we have talked about the possibility of, um, of refining that goal, having a conversation about that goal. I think another difficulty with that goal is that, um, I, I don't believe that was ever taken up at the School Committee. And so I think that, as with many things, um, you know, both sides of the street, so to speak, should be committed to that type of a goal. And that's probably a good opportunity to at least start that discussion. Um, and so something that, you know, we're gonna talk about internally, and we'll talk about with the finance team of how we want to present that, but it's just an opportunity to have that discussion. Will we arrive at a new goal, I don't know. Um, but again, that's the time where we're, um, all together. So, um, that's one of the things that we talked about, and then the Finance Committee, just to sort of give you, uh, or let you know what we talked about in the third, um, they gave some additional feedback. Uh, one of the things they were really interested in is, is right now, we have the, the budget table within the budget document. It lists, um, the department requests, and then it lists the town manager recommendations, and, um, there's not a lot of narrative around that, there's actually no narrative around it, and so the question came up as, you know, can we better understand what your thought process was, or what criteria you used to make those decisions, which I think is a great, you know, ask, and we can certainly do more of that in our presentations, and then also in the budget document. Um, and I'm probably not remembering, um, oh, I think another thing that, sorry, another thing that we talked about was, um, you know, kind of trying to understand, like, if the Select Board or the Finance Committee put forward, like, a, you know, a a limit or a cut across the board, how they would understand what that would mean for services, and so, um, we don't have a solution, but just, they, that was something that they raised, so.
Can you, they want to understand, like, how that process would work, or?
Well, it was just kind of an overall question, like, if we, if we get to the point where we want to cut, you know.
Well, that's come on the town meeting floor before.
Right, and so what does that mean, and it's in, on the spot, it's, um, it's a difficult thing to have a thoughtful response to. So, just sort of, those are some of the things that they, that they raised, but, um, I don't know. So, equally interested in hearing from all of you, not really tonight, just wanted to set the table and just to have the same conversation here that we had with the Finance Committee, which was, it was a brief conversation, I mean, it wasn't, it was just kind of the start, I think, of that process.
Yeah, just a question on that one is, is, um, that, that last one you just said, would, were you, were they asking, do you think, in terms of thinking that they may request something like that, and they want to know how to approach it, because again, I look at it as an advisory committee, not as a.
Yeah.
Decision-making committee, I just curious.
I think it's just things that they've heard.
Okay.
And so just trying to understand, like, how that would even work.
Okay, perfect, that is a good question, I just want to make sure it's.
Yeah, and, and I guess, yeah, so thinking of an example out loud, so let's say recommends ten percent of some department.
Right.
Right, budget, and so, the Advisory Finance Committee has no control over what the department does with its budget. So they are then, at that point, asking the, that department, if you had ten percent less, what would happen?
Right, right, yeah, so if we were gonna do an across-the-board cut, like, what would that look like? Um, in communities that are facing an override, they have to prepare two budgets, so I'm not suggesting that, but that's, you know, it's just kind of seeing, like, what's the impact, and because, I mean, I think, like, sort of holistically, we can say the impact is often going to be personnel, which is going to have an impact, just because we know that our budgets are largely salary, so.
Got you, and, and pardon me, so it would be, okay, that would be probably one job or however many jobs you wouldn't identify, right?
I mean, I, I mean, I did say, you know, and I don't think this was their, the ask, but as part of that conversation, like, we're not gonna put forward a budget with a two percent increase, a three percent, you know, a four, and just said, you know, that's not something that we're gonna do, but, um, just trying to think about, you know, what the cost of a percentage is or something.
There's, there's two aspects to that concept, right? On the one hand, you say, what does it look like if we propose across-the-budget cut? Have no idea, and there's no way to even say what it would look like unless you understood the size of the cut. If it was across-the-border, specific departments. Procedurally, you could say, you know, our, our budget is, we identify what's level service, right, and then we have program enhancement, or program improvement line items. So procedurally, you could say, well, when the departments put together their goals and objectives, there's a priority to. And you would start it, you know, if you have to cut X percent, you start at the lowest priority and work your way up until you reach the goal, right, I mean, other than that, I'm not even sure, you know, how, you know, how you answer the question.
Yeah, I, I don't.
And so, I mean, it's good, it's good for discussion, which is the point of this, but.
I don't want to represent the AFC in this, it was really like a very short conversation, but it's a good time to start that conversation, so I wanted you to all be aware of it.
Thank you, Christie. Further, we'll go on to item thirteen, uh, request to approve meeting minutes, May third, twenty twenty-four, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments?
Thank you, Sula.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, yes, Sula, you're doing that? And on, on item fourteen, how manager report, Christie?
Um, so on Thursday, the thirteenth, the, uh, Bay State Commons will start being used for the farmer's market on Thursdays. Um, so it'll be a weekly event now through mid-October, running from two to six P M. Um, the library director search committee had their first meeting on Wednesday, June fifth. So we'll be meeting this week, we actually met just before this meeting, um, but meeting this week to conduct screening interviews, and we hope to recommend finalists to the trustees by the end of the month. Um, for the community center, the bits for the architect are due, due on June eighteenth, so we hope to make a decision quickly for the board's consideration at the June twenty-fifth meeting. Um, and that would kick off, uh, sort of, the public engagement piece of this process. Um, and then for the golf club building, the municipal building committees interviewed three firms, firms for performance of the feasibility study, so they'll likely choose the firm at their meeting on June thirteenth, so this week. Um, for department updates, for the Board of Health, uh, they hosted a well-attended pay-as-you-through session, we all did. Uh, so that's actually, that, I mentioned it earlier, the one at the senior center, so that's available on, um, Westboro TV, I don't know if I mentioned that before. And then again, the next one is, uh, June eighteenth at six P M. Um, they also held a fall prevention class at the Parkinson Group on May thirty-first. Um, the class included different exercises that helped to prevent falls, and discussion of the stages and progression of Parkinson's disease. The public health nurse held a hearing protection class for the public work staff on May twenty-first, talked about different types of hearing protection, decibels of different machinery, um, and then what can cause immediate deafness. Um, and then regular weekly testing has commenced at Town Beaches, the testing results are submitted to the state database, and the results are available, um, on the website, it's a mass.gov website, which is within this report, which will be posted online. Um, the fire department was recently awarded grant funding in the amount of eighty-one hundred dollars from Governor Haley's office to conduct student awareness fire education and fire safety education for senior citizens. Um, so this will allow the department to expand the capability of their community risk reduction programs. They've also recently hired three new firefighters who have completed a one-week orientation program. Firefighters Norman Sikonsky, Julia Durning, and Shane McLaughlin have now been assigned to their permanent shifts and to awaiting, awaiting assignment at the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Uh, the department is slated to accept delivery of a new fire truck next week. Uh, this vehicle was approved at the March Town Meeting in twenty twenty-one, and is slated to replace engine two, which is currently twenty-eight years old. Selectman, or the department would like to offer the Select Board an opportunity to see the truck prior to an upcoming meeting.
Awesome.
Cool. Great, rides, we're getting rides.
You're gonna drive it.
Um, in the police department, Joe Badgley recently resigned from the department to pursue a different career, so the department's looking for the right candidate to become a patrol officer. Members of the department recently completed their mandatory firearms training, and they are grateful for the assistance of the fire department, uh, who. and they are grateful for the assistance of the Fire Department, who conduct the annual CPR recertification, which is also part of the mandatory training. The Public Works Department, the project to install PFAS treatment at the Oak Street Treatment Plan is contracted, so the project kickoff meeting is scheduled for this week. Congratulations to Jake Clapp and Marcos Pesos, this year's recipients of the DPW Golden Shovel. After completing nine stations that assessed their public work skills, the team achieved the highest score out of the six teams that competed. This event is held annually as part of our recognition of National Public Works Week.
That's awesome. Great. That's cool.
Excuse me. The second round of our 10-week sector maintenance program begins this week. Three 10-week sessions occur over the course of the summer to provide predictable routine maintenance of DPW assets throughout the town. And then finally, the DPW recently conducted an incident response practical exercise that discussed six different potential scenarios that might require DPW response, including hazardous materials, spill, car fire, winter storm, and tornado. As now comes, staff gained confidence in existing responses, and training equipment shortfalls were identified. That's it.
Thank you, Kristi. On to issues and correspondence. Maybe you'd like to go first?
Sure, I'll go. The Economic Development Committee met last week. I'd guess the biggest news out of the meeting was that Todd Alexander, who has been chair and a longstanding member of the committee, and even prior to that was an ambassador, I think back to the initial creation of the role, after all these years, and I don't think he wanted to tell us how many it was, has decided to step down. We're very fortunate, though, in Todd's everyday role, he also supports town businesses. So, so we will still benefit from his hard work. But just a thank you to Todd for all his years of service. And I did see he re-upped on the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we haven't lost him completely. But that, there is going to be an open position on that board. We, the committee has discussed it as, going first to one of the current ambassadors before we looked outside candidates, we want to make that a stepping stone. And there are now six ambassadors within that. But if anybody's interested in becoming involved in the Economic Development Committee, please reach out. And additionally, thank you, Kristi, for, oh, pardon me. Also, as part of the Economic Development Committee, the Design Review Board came in front of the Economic Development Committee, and they have revamped their guidelines, made them much more straightforward, really given a nice succinct presentation. They do still need to go before the Planning Board for approval, so I believe there may still be edits. But just want to say thank you to that committee. It looked like they've been doing a lot of good work, and really trying to help the downtown and people understand what the requirements are. I think before that, it was like 20 or 30 pages of handwritten. It was, so, thank you.
Is that a recorded meeting, Sean?
It is.
Yeah, okay.
It is. And then, thank you, Kristi, for mentioning the farmer's market at Bay State Commons. There is a wonderful article in the Community Advocate this week. If you've been to the farmer's market, it sounds like it's going to be even bigger and better. I encourage everybody to check it out starting this Thursday, and I might have taken somebody else's comment there, but pardon me. That's it.
Next?
Sure, I'll jump in. Kristi stole some of my thunder as well, but Municipal Building Committee met last week. We meet again Thursday, as Kristi mentioned, to choose the architect for the feasibility analysis and study. And one of the big pieces of this is that we put a tight timeframe in front of them to have something ready by mid-September, so we can move forward at the fall special town meeting. So all three of the candidates all said that that timeframe they felt was reasonable, and that they could do the work they need to do, which is inclusive of community engagement, et cetera. So really look at feasibility. And just as a reminder, from the board's perspective, it's really feasibility looking at, it was part of the request proposal was put out. So looking at both a, two scenarios, basically a rehab as well as a new construction. I think some of the stuff that was echoed is it may be a partial rehab, that it might be stuff that, in the discussions that were presented, that each of them said that there may be pieces that just don't make sense, and other pieces, if we did a rehab, that didn't make sense, thinking of the old historic building versus the newer add-on. So more to come there, but Thursday, the plan is, and it's on our agenda, that we will basically discuss and appoint that architect. Also attended the Rec Department as the liaison last week, a number of things discussed. I think the two biggest things that I would bring up, one is, unfortunately, if folks have not heard, but that we were unsuccessful again this year in obtaining lifeguards for Lake Chauncey. So the beach is going to operate similar to last year in terms of hours, but there will not be lifeguards there. On the more positive news, during that meeting, the director was late to the meeting because she was at the Planning Board, and Planning Board did approve, and final approval for the dog park. So the dog park has its approval to move forward.
Great.
That was all I had.
Thank you, Ian. Go ahead.
Okay. So Saturday, June 15, the Saturday at Veterans Freedom Park at 1:00 p.m., the Veterans Advisory Board, along with cosponsors of the Fire Department, Police Department, and DPW, as well as support from our Veteran Service Officer and local scouting organizations, are conducting a formal West Flag Burning Ceremony. If you have an old flag that you want to respectfully and properly dispose of, please arrive at the park about 1:00 p.m. There'll be a short, interactive information session about proper care and disposal of the American flag, and an opportunity then for you to properly dispose by flame of the flag. Additionally, the National Lancers, one of the oldest cavalry organizations in the U.S., are special guests, and they'll be doing a demonstration and short performance. And so it was well-attended last year and very effective. And so please participate if you're interested, even if you don't have a flag to burn, and you want to see what it's all about. It's an interesting, it's definitely interesting and educational event.
No, no.
I was just going to say, the, the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust changed the schedule of its meeting this month. It's not this Thursday. It's Monday morning at 9:00 a.m. We have an action-packed agenda, as we try and wrap things up in preparation for the start of the new fiscal year, and have some projects move forward. Part of the reason is multiple members of the trust, along with the town's planning director, are attending the Mass Housing Partnership's Annual Housing Institute in Worcester on Wednesday and Thursday. It is hardcore education and training for local officials and volunteers involved in affordable housing issues and development.
Thank you.
Sure. So just to add on to Kristi and Sean's comments, just on the farmer's market, really exciting program this year. It will be June 13 through October 17. It's a rain or shine event at Bay State Commons. Just want to thank the town for its support in hosting that, you know, allowing that space to be used for that purpose. It will run from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. In addition to a great lineup of farmer's market vendors, both for food and other things, gifts, et cetera, there will be food trucks there, there will be entertainment, and there was also, the Food Pantry will be there supporting that, and will have some food available, I don't exactly know how they're going to do that, but for folks that need that, as well as maybe to sign up. And also, the Pop Club, which is the Power of Produce, is like this cool savings program for kids as well as seniors. Basically, anyone who enrolls, you sort of get, remember the old-fashioned passbooks when you went to the bank? You sort of get three pop bucks each at each farmer's market, and you can spend those on items there. And in addition, you can save them too. So if you're like, oh, I really want to buy that, and it's going to cost me more. So the vendors are all on board with that. It's free to sign up. Again, it's, seniors know how to manage their money, but it also teaches kids kind of the power, like, the economics and the value of a dollar, a pop dollar. And also, I don't know if all the vendors will be taking it, but SNAP benefits as well. So kudos to the Rotary Club and Kristen Bradley, who is really kind of managing the market and is doing a great job. So very exciting to see what's going to happen down there. The other piece of good news I just want to share is that Jonathan Colburn, I had an opportunity on behalf of the board, I'm also the, to attend his Eagle Scout ceremony. In spite of being invited to others, I've never been the only one who attended one, and I know, and I'm sure you guys have attended others, what an honor, what a great event to go to. So congratulations to him for his work on his project, which were many trails and improvements of bridges. And he gave kudos and thanks to the Westboro Community Land Trust for their collaboration. So it truly does take a village. I would just ask, unfortunately, I cannot be at the June 18 pay-as-you-throw session that will be here. If any members of the board could attend, just in support of our town manager, and I would imagine Jim will be there, et cetera, probably Way Zero. If you could attend, I would appreciate that. I will be out of town. And there was one other item that I'm forgetting, so I'll stop. Oh, I know, I know what it was. Active Transportation and Safety Committee, there are some, there is a program, and this really just came up within the past couple of days. It's unclear if it would be action to be taken by the committee, or it would, could potentially come right to this board or the town manager directly. And that is a program whereby there are signs, which basically are like, give four feet. I don't know if you've seen those in other communities, basically for bike riders riding, that you give, give them space. And there's a state program, evidently the state provides them for free, but the municipality has to install them. Obviously, there's a labor cost to doing that. And obviously, the locations have to be determined. So they, the committee is looking into that, but that may come back directly to the board as a potential action to take, as opposed to anything that that committee needs to do. So FYI.
Thank you, Shelby.
Yep.
And I have nothing to add to the wonderful long list you all put together tonight. So with that said, can I get a motion for entering into executive session?
Sure. I move to enter into executive session. And just for the public, there were a lot of things listed, but with streamlined tonight. So my motion to executive session is under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding aqueous film forming foam, AFF, products liability litigation, MDL 2873, Phase 1, special needs claim. If the Chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating positions, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 57 Brigham Street, 10 to 12 Mill Road, 700 Freiburg Parkway. If the Chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position, and under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of May 20, 2024, and May 28, 2024.
Second. Oh, I declare an open meeting, excuse me, open session will have detrimental effect on the board's litigating and negotiating positions, and the board will not be reconvening in open session at the conclusion of the executive session. May I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Keough, yes. Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for Westboro TV. Have a great night.